Regular meeting of the City Council Needles Public Utility Authority Housing Authority, City of Needles, City of Needles, California, Tuesday, October 24th, Council Executive Session. A call to order.
Councilmember McCorkle.
Here.
Merritt.
Here.
Jernigan.
Here.
Pogue.
Here.
Belt.
Here.
Campbell.
Here.
Thank you. A council member Longbreak is on the line for executive session in the other room.
Recede the City Council meeting and convene a joint council NPUA meeting. Public comments pertaining to the executive session items. A three-minute time limit per person has been established. Recede to executive session. Executive session, do you want to read that, John?
Yes, I would. So, we are not going to be meeting in closed session regarding item A, which was potential initiation of litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-6.9D4. So, we are not meeting on that. That pertained to potential action against MIH entities, the cannabis company. We are not going to have that closed session. But we will be meeting in closed session on item B, which is conference with legal counsel existing litigation, Paragraph 1 of Subdivision D of Section 5495-6.9 of the Government Code. And the case number is, or case name is Inray Aquous Film Foaming Foams Product Liability Litigation. And the case number is 2-18- MN 2873 RMG.
That's one. The regular meeting of the City Council Needles Public Utility Authority Housing Authority, City of Needles will come to order. Executive session report by city attorney.
Yes, the council met in closed session. They did not, they did not meet on item A. They met on item B, and it was the council and NPUA board meeting in closed session. It was conference with legal counsel existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-6.9D1. The name of the case, Inray Aquous Film Foaming Foams Product Liability Litigation, Case Number 2-18 MN 2873 RMG. There was reportable action taken in closed session. There was a motion to opt out of a class action settlement and authorize the mayor to sign any necessary documents. That motion was made by councilmember Pogue. The second was by councilmember Campbell, and it was unanimous vote in approving the motion to opt out of the class action settlement. Councilmember Merritt, or Vice Mayor Merritt was in favor of the motion. Councilmember Campbell was in favor. Councilmember Pogue was in favor. Councilmember Belt was in favor. Councilmember Longbreak was in favor. Councilmember McCorkle was in favor, and the mayor also in favor.
Thank you. Roll call.
Councilmember Campbell.
Here.
McCorkle.
Here.
Merritt.
Here.
Jernigan.
Here.
Pogue.
Here.
Belt.
Here.
Longbreak.
Oh, what?
Well, I guess his insurance contacted him and said that he needs to...
Somebody needs to mute.
Lauren and Brody are both on somebody else's insurance because that...
Sean and...
Got it, sorry about that.
Councilmember Longbreak, are you here?
I think he's here.
He'll be, he'll be calling then, I think.
Okay.
Do you hear me?
Oh, yes, you're here.
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you.
Okay, Mountain. Okay, we'll stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic the richest stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and ever.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of community. We thank you for our city, for our elected officials, for the trust bestowed upon us, for the businesses, the churches, the families, the individuals, our visitors, and our surrounding communities, who make our City of Needles the great destination that it is. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Approval of the agenda.
I'm moved to approve.
One second.
Councilmember Campbell.
Here.
Yes. McCorkle.
Yes.
Merritt.
Yes.
Jernigan.
Yes.
Pogue.
Yes.
Belt.
Yes.
Longbreak.
Yes.
Thank you.
Conflict of interest tonight?
I have a conflict of interest on item number three. I don't feel like I could give a fair non-biased vote on that because of my work in the recovery industry.
And so that's not, it's not necessarily a legal conflict in the ordinary sense, but it's a bias issue that councilmembers raising, or for that reason he's recusing himself.
And I have to recuse myself because I opined about it at the planning commission meeting. Number three as well.
Correspondence?
None, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. Introductions, we have prior councilmember Tim Terrell tonight.
Thank you.
City Attorney, parliamentary procedures.
Yes, according to the rules of procedure that have been adopted by the City Council, the mayor or presiding officer is responsible for the maintenance of order and decorum at all times. No person should be allowed to speak who has not first been recognized by the chair. All questions and remarks should be addressed to the chair. A councilmember once recognized shall not be interrupted while speaking unless called to order by the presiding officer. No member shall be allowed to speak more than once upon anyone's subject until every other member choosing to speak thereon shall have spoken. Public members attending council meetings shall observe the same rules of order and decorum applicable to the council. And just as a reminder, the council has adopted a three-minute time limit for public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. As a courtesy to those in attendance, we would ask that cellphones be turned off or set in their silent mode. Thank you. Public appearance. Persons wishing to address the NPUA City Council on subjects other than those scheduled are requested to do so at this time. When called by the mayor, please announce your name, address for the record. In order to conduct a timely meeting, a three-minute time limit per person has been established by Municipal Code Section 2-18. Amendments to the California Government Code Section 54950 prohibits the City Council from taking act on a specific item until it appears on the agenda. Anybody? Three minute, okay. Public comments pertaining to the NPUA council items. A three-minute time limit per person has been established, except change order number one, the final, not to exceed $26,605.26, funded from the project contingency fund for work completed by Phillips Excavating Incorporated. For the water meter replacement project, and authorize staff to execute said change order and accept the notice of completion for the work, staff.
Yeah, and that a member of members of the council, in front of you, we have the final change order for the work completed by Phillips Construction. As you're all aware, we, Rainey and company replaced all of the meters throughout the city. And so, we had Phillips Construction, they were the bidder for the, they awarded the bid for the project. Total project cost was $617,000. What, what good news is, the way it reads is, is a little curious, but just so everybody's on the same page, we were, there was a net reduction of $29,526 for the original proof of the project. So, we actually came in within the total project cost. So, we're actually saving money. So, it's always good when you, when you're saving money on projects. And so, I commend the staff, Rainey and her team, to ensure that we were able to get there. But what you're seeing is an increase of a project cost of $26,000 in addition to the contingency, because when we first went through the, the drill, there were 85 meters that needed to be, or in addition to what we had previously predicted. So, that's what you're seeing that change order for. So, we're, and I just recommended action is to accept the change order for the 29, for the $26,605,000, and then a notice of completion for the final contract amount to the project and accept the notice of completion so that the work can be reported with the county and moved on. So, another successful project that was completed by our city within the total project cost.
Thank you. I have a question. Why 85 more meters?
Yeah, so the 85, so if you go to the second page, the change order, it's, it's broken down. So, the breakdown of the, the various meters are 50 additional residential meters that needed to be purchased that weren't anticipated, and then an addition of 35 additional residential meters in, in one and a half, and then five eight. So, the two different sizes, basically, we needed more meters than we had originally anticipated.
Just because we counted wrong, or how, how did we miss?
I mean, when we go through the process, we try to do our best to identify what we believe is going to be the magic number. So, we just realized that we needed a couple more.
Okay. Any more questions by counselors? Okay. Public hearing on this item? If not, public hearing will be closed. Okay.
And I'll approve.
One second.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
McCorkle.
Yes.
Merritt.
Yes.
Jernigan.
Yes.
Pogue.
Yes.
Belt.
Yes.
Longbreak.
Yes.
Thank you.
Adjourn the joint council NPUA meeting and convene a Housing Authority HACN meeting. Rule call previously taken, public comments pertaining to the HACN item. A three-minute time limit per person has been established. Housing Authority of the City of Needles update.
Yes. Board of Commissioners, I'm wearing a different hat. So, in front of you, basically, Angelica Dearborn is in the, our housing managers worked very hard for Housing Authority last few months. It's been reported out that we actually went from trouble to substandard to almost standard in the next coming months. So, we'll get that notice coming out. But we've done this the fastest any housing authority has ever done before, which is really exciting. So, it really goes to the, you know, the staff that we've got in place to, you know, really, it's really nice that we can celebrate these wins. So, on April 25th, there was a contract awarded for the windows and doors. And so, now the windows are all completed, 302 windows have been replaced. So, when you go by the property across the street, all 52 units have each window replaced, which is great. Talked to the residents, we were doing a walk-through the other day, and they were just so elated that all their windows were being replaced. We're halfway through with the doors, they were on backorder. And so, in the next couple weeks, we'll be able to finish that project up. We have all the doors on hand to be able to complete that, and so, it's really exciting. Now, the, we went out on August 1st, 2023 for our Section 8 housing vouchers, and those all have been leased out, rented out. So, there's 23 Section 8 vouchers, and there's 52 public housing units. And that's important because there's a distinction between the two. And that leads me into my next comment, is that the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development issued their CMAP, which is a certification. For the public housing, we were substandard, right? But for the public, or the Section 8 housing, we were actually standard. And so, we got 110 out of 135 points. And so, that really is remarkable. And that was something that was, that was a report card that went up recently. And so, it was nice that Angelica was able to get that in a year and actually be standard. So, now we've got the baseline, so we know we're standard. So, we know, we can, we can move up from here. So, basically, the, the few points that we had missed are correctable actions. We do have the action plan and the report card provided to you. Basically, you know, it's reporting, it's, it's a contact list. It's a, the payment standards for fair market rents, we were at like 89.9 immediate 90 percent. So, these are minor points, that's why we were able to, to get, take a hit in those four different areas and not really see an impact to our scorecard and be standard. And so, both HUD, HUD was surprised that we got through unscathed. So, that's always nice when we prove the federal that we're wrong. And then, we, Hassan had staff reported, so we had two housing commissioners that had stepped down. We're currently actively looking for two more. One's age restricted and has to live on the property. The other one can be in at-large, so there's an add in the paper Wednesday. So, if you know anybody that wants to participate and be on the housing, the, the Housing Commission, which is the recommendation board to the board of commissioners. And so, those two positions are open and ready for somebody to, to get appointed. So, they'll come in front of the council, and they'll interview and go through that process. The U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, a couple months ago, issued us technical assistance. Luckily, we've got some policies and procedures that are dated from back to 2018. And that's no fault of anybody that's there today, that, that's just what we're working with. And we talked about this previously. So, they're going to work closely with Angelica. And we've got an action plan to get those policies and procedures updated by this December so that we can move forward. You know, VASH implementation, we want to make sure that's not currently in our, in our policies and procedures. But as we all know, we got some VASH vouchers, and so, we want to make sure that we update our policy procedures so we can move forward. So, it's take care of your house first, and then we'll move forward being able to, to build upon that. And then, we were also able to add a second maintenance worker, Lawrence DeLeon, to our staff. So, we're going to be able to provide the high level of services that our residents deserve. So, it's been very nice, if we can set up a tour. We just recently did a tour for the, the housing commissioners, and so, he knows we can set it up for the council. We'll do a walk-through of the facility so you can get to know the facility. And it's really, it's really nice, the team that we have there and the, the work that we're doing there. It's really rewarding for our residents. So, that concludes my report. I now have any available for any questions that you might have.
Do you have questions?
Have one. Are we at 100% occupancy right now, or is there available units there?
So, for the Section 8, we are 100%, but for the public housing, there is a vacancy.
Okay, so we're...
So, we're pretty much, yeah, we're pretty much. And, and again, there's not a lot of movement, no, you know. So, usually, the, you know, the leases are there for a period of time, so...
Is there, is there like a certain amount of time you can live there, or is it forever?
It's, as long as they qualify, so Angelica Dearborn has been working annually. I mean, the qualifications, you got to make sure you check all the boxes. And so, as long as you check the boxes, you know, you, you've got the, the right amount of people living in the unit. You know, if you don't have people that are not identified on your voucher, because a voucher is assigned to the family size, and so, the group of people you can add and subtract folks, and then move around. And so, if you've got a three-person voucher, you're in a three-person unit, you know, we do all those, make sure that your income qualifies. And so, you know, there are folks that move up, you know, like the recent vacancy with the Housing Commissioner, getting too much into it, you know, they, they're going to a different facility, senior housing. So, that opened up a unit. So, so as long as they qualify, they're able to remain there.
Okay, thank you. Good news for Needles. Adjourn the Housing Authority HACN meeting and reconvene council meeting. Call to order. Roll call was previously taken. Public hearing. Public hearing, notice to consider all evidence and testimony for or against City Council Resolution 2023-55, approving an amendment to City Council Resolution 2022-75, adding cannabis consumption to the existing 2,399 square foot retail cannabis business to be located at 2701 Columbus Drive, also known as APN 0660-081-4000 in the C2 general commercial zone. Staff report.
Yes, I just want to make sure, Councilor Longacre, Longbreak, excuse me, Councilor Longbreak, we'll make sure that we hop off the line, please, and I'll send you a text as soon as we're ready to go. That way, you're not violating your, the conflict that you had stated.
You got it, I'm, I'm hanging up right now.
All right, thank you, I'll send you a text. Okay. All right, so both Pogue and Longbreak are no longer with us, and so, we're going to go ahead to the PowerPoint presentation.
Did you want me, Patrick, to explain?
Yes, please.
The reason that Councilmember Pogue is out?
Yes, please.
Okay. So, the reason Councilmember Pogue is out, just for informational purposes, is this is a quasi-judicial proceeding that's before you tonight to approve this project. And so, what you're doing is you're taking the facts and you're applying them to the law and deciding whether to issue the, the entitlement, the land use entitlement. And so, you're, you're, first, it goes to the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission makes a recommendation, and then the council is the final decision-maker in that process. And so, if a council member goes to the Planning Commission and they express their opposition or support of a project, then they're not really being unbiased. They're, they're showing that they're predisposed to oppose a project or favor a project before they've sat as essentially like a court, like you're sitting today, listening to the evidence and testimony that's provided to you at the hearing. And so, for that reason, because she did opine in terms of whether she supported or didn't support the project, the Planning Commission, it would be inappropriate to have her sit on the council to make the final decision. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yes.
So, it's just better, you know, when we have items like this, land use decisions coming for the council, not criticizing anybody, but it's just, you know, the council member may not have realized that. But if you choose to speak against or for a project at the Planning Commission level, it may affect your ability to participate at the council level.
All right, thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
So, in front of you, Mayor, members of the council, in front of you, a resolution 2023-55 for 20701 Columbus Drive for a cannabis lounge application. As previously stated, there's an amendment of the CEP that already been approved. As you're aware, the city code requires for a lounge to have a retail component. So, they actually have already been approved for retail. And so, what they're doing is, is they're adding the lounge component to their application. And so, it's really, I know it's, it's there to things, but that's the way the code reads, and we got to just go through the process. So, here's the location map, it's on the west end of I-40. Looking at the site, to the, to the west is open area, to the north is the freeway, to the south is, you know, hotel and commercial area. And then, to the west, there's some residential with the freeway, some more commercial. Again, here's a zoom up of the existing site that stands today. Basically, you've got the two cultivation buildings that are there, and then you've got the, that site's actually been demoed, that used to be the old Taco Bell, it is no longer there. So, it's a demo. And so, without going, you know, reading all the slides, so basically, they were previously approved for retail. Now, their application's in front of us for a lounge. It's, it's within an area that's already has existing cannabis cultivation and soon to be retail with the building of the retail. And so, it's going to utilize the existing area, the 2,300 chi nine square feet that was already previously approved. So, here's the existing site plan that's already been approved by the council. So, you've got the two buildings that aren't part of the project, which are still on the site plan. You've got the proposed building four, which is the phase two, which is the cultivation that's been approved already. And then, you've got this little proposed building three, the dispensary, it's going to be a phased project. So, they're going to start with the small building and then build the larger building after the fact. And so, they're, they're in front of you today to make that a lounge. And so, the proposed site plan, basically, the first one, you can see there were only two parking spaces down there. Obviously, with the lounge, people are going to be coming there and staying longer. And two spaces weren't very suitable for the site. And so, what they went ahead and did was they amended their site plan to include five more parking spaces along the east side of that building. And so, you'll see that they're going to put up a temporary, as part of their conditions, wrought iron fence, and they'll take it down because the border of the building, which is going to be phased, was the actual normal boundary. But that building isn't being, it's being phased in. And so, in the meantime, they're going to put up a wrought iron fence, block and wrought iron fence to, to help create that separation from the cultivation and the retail lounge. And so, the floor plans, the existing floor plans, the lower area, you know, retail floor, and basically, this is the, the tenant improvements, because that's basically what we're looking at, is that they're going to be coming in through the bottom there where it says customer check-in. So, you're going to walk in through that, the, the east side, through that door. And then, you're going to come down, you're going to check in, security desk. There's a retail area where you're going to read, you know, meet with the bud tenders, and you'll be able to choose your product. And then, there's a door that separates the seating area, which is the lounge area, and then the customer area. So, come in through the lounge, and then eventually, they'll exit through that, through that west door. And so, you're coming in one area, and then you're going in, you're exiting through the other area. And the existing, they'll be unchanged, the top floor, which will have an office and a foyer, utility room. And so, the landscape plan still remains the same that they're, they're proposing for the first project. So, there's no, there's no amendment to that, because that's just staying in there. But I know this is an important key. And then, the elevations will remain the same. Here's the proposed, front of the elevation of the north, there's a large unit of the area. Here's a proposed elevation to the west. And then, at the east. Enlarge the east, then the south. And this is what the site looks like today. You've got the, from the northwest, you've got the existing facilities in the back there. From the west, you've got the other existing facility, and then you've got the, where the Taco Bell used to be. Now, you've got the dirt mound where they're going to put the building. And then, from the north, this is from the collation area. And again, everybody has been notified within 300 feet of the site. Added conditions, you know, basically, you got to be 21 years older to, to be able to go and ingest the cannabis. You want to make sure that there's no odors leaving the area. We, we do have a lounge right now that is existing, that has done a pretty good job of not having odors even into the, into the area. So, we, and so, basically, so be, the retail cannabis must install, maintain good odor control system, and then cannabis onsite ingestion, you can't walk away. Well, you can't with an open container, they got to re, they got to reseal it. And so, but basically, these are the conditions that are put on the facility, which are within our code. Can you go to the next one? So, so just press the, yeah, there you go. All right, and so, at the Planning Commission, the unanimously voted approval of this project. They received public comment regards to consuming cannabis and driving. And so, they discussed that there is, they regulate that, the applicants here, so you can elaborate a little bit more on that, the consuming cannabis and driving. And then, this is what the, the final products could be looking like for the dispensary. It's important to, to understand what these renderings mean to the project, because this is what we hold the applicant, at the end of the day, before they get the C of O, we ensure that what they told you it was going to look like, it's what it's going to look like. So, I know that we're going to the iPhone, one of the other projects in the city. So, it's important to understand, you know, what's being presented to you. They are held accountable to the architect renderings that they do provide you. So, that's an important fact. So, our recommendation is to approve 20-23, or 2023-55, adding the consumption lounge to the existing retail cannabis business located at 2701 Columbus Drive. And that concludes my staff report. Available for any questions you might have. The applicants also here.
Questions by the council?
I just have one question. I do, I, I see clearly on the drawings that there isn't, but just to be sure, between the lounge and the future cultivation not apart under separate permit, there's no access between those buildings? That's a wall, and there are no doors that could ever access your cultivation by the public? Okay, that's it, I, this, I just, I just want to be sure. It's not in there, but that's just one of the things I want to make sure that's never going to happen. Thank you.
Just a couple things.
How long have they had their retail license?
Hi, Cheryl Montanaz, 2787 Side Wheel Drive, Bullhead, Arizona. Last year, I don't have the dates, last year.
Yeah, right.
Twelve months, yeah. They're getting ready to break ground. I was doing the revision to the interior and hoping they could get the structure up in the meantime. interior and hoping they could get the structure up in the meantime, but we're close.
So this will be, so you're, so you're adding the retail with the lounge then, in the changing to the new?
Correct. So the building stays exactly the same. We just changed the first floor.
Changed the layout of the first.
The layout of the first floor.
Does she have anything else or?
Question, is it just going to be like the cannabis consumption? Will there be any food or anything like that? It's part of it?
They can only have, if they do choose to sell any kind of food, it's all packaged coming, it's like snacks, almost like a gas station type snack food already prepackaged. There's no cooking that would have to be on a separate facility, much like the existing one, how they have the three separate places. So yeah, what's allowed in the consumption lounges is only prepackaged, already made. So cans of soda and little snacks if they choose.
Um, what is your estimated like opening date of either one of these? Your retail store?
It'll both, it'll, it'll open like that. So they'll both be in place when it opens. I would say
I know it could change.
Twelve months at the max. Like I said, the grading plan got revised with, you know, the changing. So that's being revised. And as soon as I get that approved, you'll probably start seeing dirt being moved and with a good steady cash flow, it should really only take about four to five months to build and then getting it all decked out and up and running.
Thank you. One more.
Oh, okay.
Patrick, any, any problems with the with the cultivation here in this one?
So there have in the past, there were some odor issues that they had addressed by putting in a ventilation system that shoots it up. So
That's the only.
They've been, they've been very, they've been good with working with the city to ensure that the, with the businesses that they do have, that they do reduce odors and whatnot. Any kind of issues that they have have been addressed.
I just, I just want to just state in looking and hearing what happened at the planning commission, I wasn't there, that there were concerns about people ingesting and then driving. As far as I am concerned, I don't view this any different than a bar. I mean, we, if a bar were to come in and want a liquor license and start to sell liquor and have people come in and drink alcohol, people are going to leave under the influence of alcohol. How they leave is up to them. Whether or not they make it home in their own car or in their car, that's up to them too. And this, I don't think this is any different. So, you know, that this is a thing that's happening in life today. And that's how I look at it. So it's not that for the public's mind.
Right.
I don't think that that we do hear what they say. It's not that no one cares. It's that that it is no different. And you can't look at it differently for that reason.
I agree. I just wanted to add, there are extra restrictions on cannabis facilities. So they're only allowed a very small amount when you go into the facility. So if you went into the retail and bought something to take home, you can't even take it into the lounge. You have to leave it there until you're done. If you go into the lounge, you're allowed a minimal amount for that, for the consumption. So it's tighter than a bar. Like in a bar, no one's monitoring and letting you go. We, they only get their little amount. And then they leave and they can't, if you don't smoke at all, you don't get to take that with you. That has to go in the trash and you get your purchased product that's in a sealed bag to go home with. So it is very restrictive.
So what, what is the, I mean, what's the average time that someone would spend there? Because usually at a bar, it could be, you know, four to twelve hours. So.
So this is anecdotal for me because I've gone to the one in town just to check it out, see what their smell thing was. I've met Dean over there, you know, they go. Honestly, it's not very long because there's not a lot to do. A lot, yes. And people get snacks. A lot of times they meet there to discuss business or whatever, right? Because they can't go to a bar and then they usually don't drink. So we've met there a lot of times. They've had company parties because then you can take your, your kids, your employees. So those kind of things have been, which have been a little bit longer, but for the most part, no, there's not a lot to do. It's just somewhere that people can go to try it.
More social.
See it. The intent, I think, in the state's eyes and how like it was for, if you're buying something for medicinal and you're not sure, you want to try a tincture, and that was the intent and purpose really of these lounges is so that you can come over and one of the bud tenders can help you, or you can try the different strains that are helpful for different things and see if that's the one you want, you know, try it before you buy it. Because in the past, it was, you're like, what do I do? And they help you and you leave and then you go, okay, that worked or it didn't work. So that's kind of what it's good for is if you are new and need help and want consultation or to try it, you can do it that way. They have flights, they have different ways of doing that. The social part of it is, yeah, like the regular is just having somewhere to hang out that they normally wouldn't go to a bar.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, I just, one more. So how often can someone go in there? So once they leave, is there a timeline before they could go back into the lounge and?
So I'm really just on the design side and I I know a lot of the rules, but that one's very deep. And I don't, I wouldn't be able to answer like on that if there's a, I know when they check in and it goes into the computer and whatever, but that's into the the retail side. I don't even know if that's been a thing. I think people go and then leave and
That's it.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay.
Good question.
Public comment, any, any public comment regarding this issue? If not, public comment will be closed. Council discussion, any deliberation? Call for the vote.
I'll move to approve. I'll second. Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
McCorkle?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Yeah.
This here. So why are they watching?
That's the city property.
Council consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. The mayor or any member of the city council may pull an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Prior to council action, a member of the public may address the city council on matters scheduled on the consent calendar. A three-minute time limit per person applies. Recommended action, approve items four through six on the consent calendar by affirmative roll call vote.
Motion to approve item four through six?
I'll second.
Call to the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
McCorkle?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Pogue?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Long break?
Yes.
Thank you.
End of the, end of the council consent calendar. Regular counselor, regular council items. Ordinance number six six three dash AC, amending the Needles Municipal Code, NMC, sections of the zoning ordinance as follows. Section ninety-four permits section ninety-six uses. Section ninety-seven intensity of uses. Section ninety-eight site requirements. Section ninety-nine development standards. Section one eleven vehicular provisions. Section one twelve special requirements for certain users. Section one fifteen non-conforming situations. The Needles Municipal Code, Chapter nineteen subdivision of land, second reading adopt.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, in front of you, we've got the zoning ordinance update for the city code that hasn't been done since nineteen ninety-five. We went through this. So again, home occupancy, parking standards, some of the issues that were addressed in terms of being able to provide housing for residents and development standards that are brought into this twenty-first century. And so our recommendation is to approve this. We didn't have it unanimously was approved through the process. And so this is just the second reading, but through the draw.
Okay, I'll move to approve.
I'll second it.
Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
McCorkle?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Pogue?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Long break.
Yes.
Thank you.
Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash fifty-eight authorizing a grant anticipation note, application for rural community assistance corporation, R C A C loan program.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, we run into a challenge. And it's a good challenge to have, but it's still a challenge. And the fact that we've been, our staff has been so successful in achieving grants that we run into a cash flow problem. And so we've got six point five five million dollars with the projects that are coming online with our Duke Walkins, the first beach, with the Jackson Park Trail, with the the street improvements, the golf course irrigation, hazard mitigation. So we're about four million dollars short in terms of being able to cover those projects. And this is something that as soon as staff realized we needed to address the issue, and it's not so much it's, it's, it's a problem in the sense that it's a, it's a timing problem. And so with these kind of projects, you have to do the work. And then you submit an invoice and then you get paid for the invoice. And so when we're four million dollars short and you've got an eleven million dollar budget, we don't want to, we don't want to jeopardize ourselves for any kind of emergencies or any kind of incidents that we would need those reserves to be able to move forward. And so basically, in front of you, we've got capital expenditures that are going to outweigh the city cash flow and they're going to utilize our grant anticipation notes. And so basically, they're going to use our grant, the agreements we have executed as as a loan. It's a line of credit basically. And so they're going to take those agreements and they'll put money against it. Because when we go out to bid and we get the invoice and the work starts, we don't get that invoice till a month later. And so we submit the invoice, that doesn't get paid until two weeks later. And so by the time these folks are getting paid out, it just, it draws down on our capital. And so it's, it's really a timing issue. And so what we're going to go ahead and do is work with the Rural Community Assistance Corporation, under the guidance of Urban Futures, which is our financial analyst, to be able to utilize their expertise to get us the the line of credit that we need to be able to get us over the hump. And so it's going to be and it's a very low interest rate, five point five, which for the amounts that are drawn down and then a one point five percent upfront. And so just so we're all on the same page, I'm gonna hand out a finding financing schedule that I'd like to share with you all. And so basically, this council meeting, once we approve this, we can begin, Urban Futures can begin to work on getting that line of credit, that loan, and the work with C R C E C through the process. And so once we have a final application approval, we, the terms are identified, we will be bringing that back to council. So all, all you're doing right now is authorizing city staff to move forward with the, with an application. So we wanted to make sure we got this in front of you so that we all understood where we were and what we had going on. As I mentioned, it's a good problem to have. But again, it's, it's an issue that we need to be able to ensure that we are use utilizing the revenue from the grant, using that as a security to get the funding to be able to move our projects forward. So we're going to be impacting or improving the quality of life for our residents with new parks, with new pavement. But again, we don't have enough in reserves to be able to cover the four million dollar shortfall that we are, we are facing. And so we're looking at sixty-five thousand dollar estimated service fee from Urban Futures to help get us through the legal process to get the line of credit issued. And so we're anticipating somewhere around two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars worth of costs that are going to be put towards this effort. And again, we're going to work on paying this off as soon as we get the money because it's the way it's going to work. And we're going to pay for the work. So we're going to get the loan, the loan's available to pay as soon as we have that, as soon as we get the invoice. And then once we get the money from the state, we're going to pay off the loan. And so it's going to be a quick quick turnaround. But again, the issue is we got to make sure we've got enough money in reserves to cover ourselves in event emergency or any kind of those issues. Because again, we're four million dollars short. Again, it's a good problem to have because these are great projects moving forward for our city. But again, this is going to set us up financially and we all have a fiduciary responsibility to ensure that the projects that have already been approved by council are constructed, built, and we're able to keep the reserves in our, in our reserve, keep the city operational. And there are Urban Futures is on the line also. If you have any specific questions. So again, I'm available for any questions that you might have.
I have a question.
I just.
Well, yeah, it's a question. So by doing this, the process that we have now is we have all these grants. We don't get to have the grant until we do the work. So we hire the people, they do the work, we pay them. Then we submit for the, then we submit for the grant, then we get paid back. So we're constantly behind and an eight ball. So we can't move forward lots of projects. We can only do them as we can afford them to get the money back. This is going to consolidate, move more things forward faster.
That's right.
And so, and it's all, and it's, it's just using the money we're already granted, we're just going to get it in a different way and then move it around. So it's not so I just wanted to clarify because I think for some people, they might not understand when you're saying you're four million dollars short. It's not that we're short and we're borrowing four million dollars to do some project. We have the grants. We just can't have that money until the work is completed and an invoice. So we are constantly waiting, you know, to be paid, to be paid invoice, to be paid back. And when, once that's done, then we can go on to the next one. This gets us going a little faster. Otherwise, it's going to take us a long time to do our beautiful projects because we have so many of them. Is that correct?
Right. It's a liquidity problem. And so basically, it's having the cash on hand. And so it's, they're using the note, the grant amount secure the loan. And so that's what's getting us the loan is basically that we've already got approval from an agency, let's use Caltrans, for instance, for the the park down, the Bobbells Beach Park. So basically, we're going to use that agreement that we have with Caltrans, turn it over to R C E C, let them know that we've got two million alone and they're going to loan against that. And so we're going to charge financing fees for that. But it's again, it's, it's a liquidity problem.
Thank you. I just want to clarify for that anyone that's listening that you didn't understand.
And real quick, we have looked at pushing back projects. But again, the council's been steadfast on the payment management program to ensure that our residents are being they're getting their payment redone. And so that's what, those are the kind of projects we would push back. And so if we were to cover these costs. And so we don't, we don't want to do that. We wanted to do both and move both of them forward. Because you all have made a promise here, residents, that we were going to do the payment management. And so this is just the the financial fees to get us moving forward in the direction that we all want to do to improve the quality of life for our residents.
Thank you for answering my question.
I have a question. So the is it hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to originate this line of credit? Sixty thousand loan fee and advisor and legal services?
So we're going to take the two, the city anticipates a two point three million dollar capital expenditure for the street and hazard mitigation. So if you take the four million, times the five, the one point five origination fee percent, that's sixty thousand.
Right.
And then you're going to have the five point five on the money drawn out.
Is the interest, right?
Right. And so it's going to be a, again, we're going to pay it off as soon as we have it. So that interest, the five point five will be relatively short pain for the city.
Understood. But my question was going to be, is that going to be paid out of the grant funds or is it, where is the money coming from? General fund?
Yes, this will be paid for by general fund revenue.
And we have the, we have the coverage.
We do have the coverage to be able to to cover the costs. But again, it's going to be, it's programmed out based on the schedule, you'll be able, so so it's not all going to come at once. And so these, these programs have to be finished by June. And so it's going to be the bigger, like right now, if we go over to Duke Watkins, you'll see a gate though. They're going to sit, they're going to submit that invoice, which is a smaller invoice.
Right.
But, you know, two weeks, three weeks, four weeks from now, those are going to be the bigger invoices. And so when, when we get to the thick of things and all the projects are coming together, we've got first beach happening, we've got Duke Walkins happening, you got Jackson. And so when when we get to the thick of things, when all the projects are coming together, we've got First Beach happening, we've got Duke Walkins happening, you got Jackson Park. So that's in about a month and a half, two months, that's when we're in the thick of things. That's when things are, that's when we're going to rely on this more than we would right now. Because right now, they're they're mobilizing, so the costs aren't as big. It's when the, you know, the bigger movement of the project occurs, the bigger expenditures occur, that's where we rely on this.
Sure, sure, interesting.
Um, I know a lot of different cities are running into this problem. I know this is actually pretty common right now. My question was, is, you were talking about a payment management thing, what did you, would you explain that a little bit more in depth?
Yeah, so the city approved the fifteen-year payment management program where we take cannabis revenues and we rebuild our streets. And so we're on phase four of that project. We've been, Obernolte was on the last agenda, the approved the Obernolte Congressional Funds, the earmarks, the eight hundred thousand, that's been taken care of the area around the school district. And so basically, the the pavement management is a, is a program that the council adopted so we can take those revenues or rebuild our streets. Is there, they're in district plan?
Well, thank you, I just wanted that for the record, okay.
Now, Patrick, this is a line of credit, correct?
Correct, more, more or less, yes, it is a line of credit.
Okay, so so we don't have to pay it until the last second, right?
Madam Chair.
So no, we will, though, there's an upfront, one point five percent. And then when we, when we draw down the funds, there'll be a five point five percent. But like I stated, there will be, as soon as we get the funds available, which is about thirty days, forty days, some, sometimes forty-five days, when we get those money from those agencies, we're going to sit, we're going to pay that loan off. So that five point five is short lived.
Divided by twelve.
No.
Correct.
Five point five per month?
No, it's.
That's per year, right?
Uh, Madam Chair, it's going to be for the time that we have to pay back the line of credit. And so if we, so if it's two months, it's three months, that five point five percent will be part of that loan, that draw down amount. And Brandon, Brandon's on the line, if you wanted to elaborate on that a little bit more, but that's my understanding.
I would like, I would like to hear more about that, how how that's, is that per month or is that per per year? How was that?
Let Patrick answer that.
Yeah, Madam Chair, so basically, it's it's per month. It's so it's per month, when you draw down those funds, you're going to be, you're going, the interest will be charged on the amount that's drawn down. And so what we would do is, as soon as we pay the invoice, we would use, we'd utilize this line of credit. And then we would get the funds back from the agency, forty-five days, sixty days, and then pay that back so that we have a short-lived five point five percent charge to us. And again, all these projects have to be done before June, and so that's, that's a quick turnaround.
May I provide an example? So, so at five point five percent, if we borrowed a hundred thousand dollars, at five point five percent, that would be fifty-five hundred dollars per year. But if we only had the money for a month, it would be fifty-five hundred divided by twelve.
That's what I was asking.
That's what would be the interest, so the five point five percent is an annual rate.
Is that, are we positive on that? Because when I, you loan me money, I pay my credit card every month, it's five percent. So if that's two months, that could be ten percent.
Right.
I mean, so this could deplete our funds, our, our reserves fast. We only have a seven hundred thousand dollar reserve.
Well, Madam Chair, Brett, Brett, Brandon's on, yeah, go ahead, Brandon.
Good, uh, good evening, Mayor, members of the council, I'm Brandon Kefory with Urban Futures. So the, tonight's item is for this application, and I I would strongly suggest that, you know, we're going to come back, as Patrick said, with the actual grant anticipation note document that will stipulate how interest works. I believe that the five and a half percent interest question is an annual rate. I have corresponded with RCAC, they indicated that it's simple interest on amounts outstanding only. That was the feedback we received from them.
For how long?
For as long as it's outstanding, so if you draw down a hundred thousand and you have it outstanding for a couple of months, they would calculate the rate, I mean, typically, it's an annualized rate, right, five and a half percent? And they would calculate that on your balance for as long as you have it outstanding. So if you borrow a hundred thousand, you know, your example was very good, if you borrow a hundred thousand for one month, you would be charged the rate divided by twelve for that month. And once you pay it back, the interest is not owed. That being said, I, I, again, we'll, we'll come back with this document.
I want that in writing.
Of course, yeah, there's going to be an agreement. Tonight's applica, is just for the application to get approved by them, we haven't been approved, so that's step one.
Right, we will get the terms in agreement and bring that back to the council.
Okay. So we'll have that in front of us before we make a final decision.
Correct.
Okay.
And we don't.
Well, tonight, tonight is, is the act, so what are we making a motion on?
Yes.
On filing the application?
File the application.
Madam Chair, so the, yeah, to file the application with Urban Futures and move more, move forward with Urban Futures working us through this process for a total cost of estimated sixty-five thousand dollars.
Thank you. So we don't plan on having this loan extend past June, July-ish, when we start, because we're going to start submitting all these invoices to the grants as certain projects are completed, right?
We will submit them as soon as the work's completed.
So.
Correct, immediately.
I mean.
Immediately.
Yeah, so we're not looking, because these have to be done by June. So we're not looking to have this go past, we'll say, getting the last payment from the, wherever we're getting the grant money from, past July-ish. So it's not even a full year.
Yeah, as long as it's not per month.
Yeah. We'll call for the motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
McCorkle?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Hoag?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Long break?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Consider counseling the regular city council MPUA H A C N meetings on Tuesday, November twenty-eighth, and Wednesday, December twenty-seven, twenty-three, due to a potential lack of quorum because of the Thanksgiving and Christmas holiday staff.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, members of the council, historically, we've taken off the second meeting in both November and December because of foreign issues, store recommendations, and all those suits and continue that tradition.
Okay. Call for the motion, I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
McCorkle?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Hoag?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Long break?
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, city attorney report.
Yes, just briefly, some of the items that we've been working on for the city include representing the city in connection with issues related to the Rio Buena Vista HOA related to utilities there. Also, representing the city on numerous code enforcement receivership cases. Some of those I mentioned at the last meeting included the River Valley Inn matter, which we successfully concluded in court. And then also the Best Motel matter, which ended up with the sale of that property to the tribe. And then we're also working with the city staff on enforcing the city's cannabis ordinances and its voter-approved tax. We've been working recently on assisting the city staff in connection with responding to Public Records Act requests. Also assisting staff on public contracting issues and also working with the city on employment matters. And then providing advice regarding conflict of interest questions as they arise, Brown Act questions. And as I mentioned at the last meeting in September, we provided AB twelve thirty-four training. We are also providing assistance to staff in connection with housing authority matters. And then we recently finished and then updated an audit letter for the Needles Public Utility Authority, which is something we do on an annual basis. If you're not familiar with it, the auditor requests that we identify any risks from a litigation standpoint that the city or the NPUA face, and they audit them separately. So we prepare audit letters twice a year. And then also assisting in, assisting in connection with the cannabis permittees in the city reviewing live scans to make sure that people that are going to work in that industry within the city don't have any prohibitive convictions. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. City clerk.
Um, I had a conference call with Civic Plus today regarding our code. Uh, we're still finishing off reviewing some questions on various sections to make a streamline and uniform throughout. I have a sample of the code as it looks, it's going to be beautiful. Uh, training on November eighth for both Candace and I, so we will know how to load up the code when a new ordinance is adopted. And our first task is going to be our lovely new, what, twenty-page? So I'll learn fast, we'll learn fast on how to get all these sections updated. Uh, harassment training for those who haven't taken it, is November second?
Online or in person?
Uh, in person, it's at the council chambers, I can get you the information. DJ P I A does harassment training. Uh, general routine, planning commission, housing commission, support. Um, and then ongoing are the lovely large records requests our officers receiving. So I've had to have dialogue with the attorneys on some of them.
Thank you. City manager.
Yeah, just briefly, I want to thank Caltrans for the East Broadway, it was dark there for a couple of times, for, for a couple of months. And so luckily, I was able to submit to them, there's a portal, they fixed it within thirty days, which is fantastic, and they continue to help. It was a graffiti on High School Hill, but we're very thankful to Caltrans. We also met with their new field representative here who replaced Joanne. So it was nice to touch base with Rainy, it's here at that meeting, so it's just nice to see face to face who are the maintenance, he's out of light. And so, you know, makes the drive on a daily basis, he gets to see, he gets to see his whole territory, which is great. There's, there's going to be a grand opening for Jolted this Saturday at one P M, Jolted, the coffee shop down there on F Street. So come down and support your local business, school safety. We met with Dr. Cameron, he was at the chamber breakfast last time around, and just talked about school safety and how they're focusing on improving it for their students. Uh, we've got some capital projects that are in process and completing, so the water treatment plant, eight million dollar project, that's broken ground, they're under construction actively, the L Street Booster is about to finish up over there on L Street. So that's going to help improve our distribution of water. And then again, Lily Hill Booster is near completion. So I thank staff for, you know, again, getting the grant, doing the project management and getting it built, so it's good to see that happen. The rec center had their tea party, forty-six young ladies, five to twelve years old, went to the rec center and had tea. Emma's too young, so she'll do it the next time around. BFI Clothing is a retail accessory store down on F Street, right next to Jolted, go check them out, they're, they make water bottles and screen printing. Another small business trying to get their feet off the ground, so go ahead and check them out. They came, we've, under the leadership of Rainy and the Public Works Department, we painted the school crosswalks and we've made those needed improvements so that students feel safe crossing the street and around the school district area. So that's always important, but they, we will put the tickler on so we can do this annually, so we get this taken care of. Uh, there's a groundbreaking for Duke Walkins coming up, they'll be reaching out. We're looking at the first week in November, but we'll get that deep solidified so we can pair it up with the contractors showing up. Bobbells Beach Park is another one that's going to be starting construction, and then the walking path down at Jackson Park. Um, we've had two successful tournaments here, the golf course. Uh, it's, it's so wonderful to hear the improvements that we've heard from folks. They've said they've never seen it so good since they were children. And so that's really meaningful for us because we've, we've put a lot of efforts with J J Delion, bringing him over with Touchstone and the maintenance crew. So it's, it's wonderful to hear that about the, the, the improvement that we've made there. And if you haven't, just go walk down there and take a look at it, it's pretty remarkable. Code enforcement cleaned up the refrigerators on Needles Highway, and then the soda machines that were next to the, the school, elementary school. So we've got that taken care of. Rick has a bench now over at the golf course on the first tee, so if you have a chance, go take a look at it, it's really nice, it's a really nice bench. Uh, the fire extinguishers, we put Angelica, her leadership, put the fire extinguishers that were, were needed. When she first came on, she reached out to the fire department and said, what did I get myself into? Basically, they outlined the necessities, and one of them was fire extinguishers. Now we have them for our residents, they're each, each fifty-two unit has one. So the chamber breakfast coming up this Thursday, Assemblyman Garcia will be calling in, it's going to be telephonic, so our, our teams oriented. So go ahead and come over and, it's at the Alps Lodge at seven thirty. As you can see, the construction at the council chambers has begun in about a month, they're going to be cleaning out their area. And we'll be meeting, we'll still be meeting in our executive session, but we'll be coming through the front as opposed to the back. And then finally, Powder Puff, you may get, I don't hold you up any longer, we'll get you over to the high school where they have their Powder Puff team game going on right now. And then finally, ICSC is heading up this week, so we've got a couple of counselors that will be going to ICSC along with our development director, Nancy Huff. And so they're going to be out there recruiting retail at the San Diego show, I think the Menchon Center with Michael Bracken. So we're looking forward to, you know, getting a grocery store and, you know, more retail for our city. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Campbell?
I have nothing, thank you.
Councilmember McCorkle?
Um, Patrick, I was wondering, because all of the marijuana dispensary and all that stuff really came about before I was up here, if I would be able to get like a historical breakdown of like conversations or if we can, or how it would work on discussing putting caps on the dispensaries and lounges, if it's even possible. And then if I could also get a updated street paving schedule? I know I'd gotten one years ago, but I just wanted another one. Also, I want to thank the city for the bright detour signs there at the underpass and how they go around and the quick response on, on that. I've already seen a couple of people use them, making U-turns, which is pretty awesome, considering they already made it past the other signs. But the fact that they did not do the U-turn that they shouldn't have. Also, I wanted to bring up, Mayor, you brought up at the stakeholders meeting about the Route sixty-six sign?
Mm-hmm.
And that they have in Kingman, but if you were talking about the under-drive-through one, back in two thousand and one, I reached out to the tourism committee that they have up there and asked them about that sign.
Legacy signs made its ninety thousand dollars.
Yeah, so it was sixty-five for the signs, they won the bid, and then it was, he said, about ninety-five to a hundred thousand for the project. But I know Legacy still has the plans for it too, so that would be a, if we wanted to.
We have that on for our goal for twenty twenty-six for the downtown.
Yeah, so just like, I had talked to him a while ago on that, so I know it could be very doable for us. Um, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Merritt?
Um, my only, I've had somebody come up to me and talk to me about the marijuana smell, and I know we talk about this a lot, but up on Lily Hill, I've heard that there was, I remember we had like a moratorium to give them some time to get it all figured out, but I just wanted to know where that was and when they're going to get it all figured out, so just kind of where we're at with that. And that's all, this is a great time of year, and it was the last few weekends, I've, you know, we've all been out and about, and it's been nice to see everything that's going on, there's a lot going on coming up, so enjoy this time of year, everyone.
Um, Councilmember Poe?
Just a couple of items, first of all, I love the signs, I like the, the green one on Needles Highway, that tells oversized vehicles turn. Um, so last week, we met actually with Assemblyman.
Um, so last week, we met actually with Assemblyman Garcia, and there was a lot of discussion on reciprocity and exceptions, the difficulties of getting, um, contractors in and how some of the state laws are impeding progress. Um, after the meeting, I had a little chat with him and suggested, we talked about this is not a problem for Needles only. Any of the border states from, um, Blython, heading north to Tahoe and on the Oregon border, that whole stretch of border cities has faces potential problems that we have. So I suggested that he might want to work with the other, uh, legislatures and form a committee or consortium. So whenever any legislation is proposed, that they look at it and see how it impacts our border cities and towns. And if it's going to cause a financial or a commercial hardship on those towns, that maybe they can be exempted from whatever new requirements that they're trying to, uh, um, implement. So we'll see how that goes. He said that's a good idea, so we'll see how that goes. And, uh, lastly, there was a CBS, uh, report that Rite Aid is closing thirty-one stores in California. Needles is not on the list. I've gone through it three times, so it's gone up and down through the list. So at least we're safe for this round. And that's it.
Councilmember them.
Um, I just wanna bring back up the visitor center, so we can start talking about that becoming a California Welcome Center. I think our visitor center is up and running. Now we need to look to getting our, um, actual California Welcome Center. Just for one of the next meetings. That's it.
Councilmember Longbreak?
I have nothing.
Thank you.
Um, I just have a couple of things. Um, when I went to the League of Cities, um, a couple of the sessions I chose, uh, the first one I went to was, um, cannabis, and most of them there were from cities our side. In fact, a couple of them had come out and visited with Rick. Um, and their main concern and their main negative, um, concept of this, and, and these were cities that had no more than two or three growers, you know, one dispensary was code enforcement. They did not have an active, forceful code enforcement that we do. And, you know, general, um, applause to us that, you know, we've done this. And, you know, it was really good, and I did get up and speak about that. And so a number of them did come up and ask me, and they did admit that code enforcement was very weak, you know, in this situation, you know, with it. And they did wanna come back out. So, and then another one I chose was small cities. And, um, I spoke with Michael Bracken about this. The small city was Rancho Cordova, which the, uh, minimum price of a home is a half million dollars. They just got a fifty-eight million dollar endowment to put a museum in their downtown, that they're trying to create a downtown. They're locked in between two big military bases. And the other city was West Hollywood, and their mayor, they're trying to, um, make their city more like Paris, France, open restaurants and all that, and that's fine for them. And they just got, um, a Tesla, um, charging station with a Route sixty-six diner next to it. So, you know, they're, they're moving on. Um, there was, um, a spokesperson from California Main Street who I went and spent time with, and she's, is reaching out to me to help us with that. Um, she sent me, um, numerous emails, and so I will come back, you know, with the program. I felt it was really important, and I, when I spoke to Michael, he was, um, a member of this for quite a number of years. And he thought with our redevelopment of the downtown, this would be a good start for us, to give us ideas and that. And then also, I attended, um, a session with the League of California Cities that they do have a program for grants for cities our size. It's called the City Inclusive Entrepreneurship. And so I'm reaching out to them to get information for Rainy and, and work with Rainy on that. Another one was big city problems in small towns. I did get a conversation with Bracken about this. And the, the trend now for the smaller cities like us is in the, the commercial buildings are so large is to, they call it cottage, where you're gonna have multiple-use businesses in small so- in a small space. You're gonna have an ice cream shop, a coffee shop, and maybe a little trinket shop. So that's kind of the new concept now, especially for smaller cities to, um, to progress and have businesses come in. And then, um, and then one big point they had was gathering concepts and a number of, um, work and collaborate with other cities just as, you know, Patrick, we're trying to work with, um, Bullhead and that too now in, um, conjunction to make us the Colorado River Valley destination for all of us. And the State of the County, I attended that with San Bernardino with Rick, uh, a couple of weeks ago. And the sup- all the supervisors for the county did a presentation of their, um, of their cities. And it was extremely, I just couldn't believe how San Bernardino has developed into this modern. And they too had, you know, numerous grants on all their parks, and they did the same thing to get their parks updated. The big thing was in San Bernardino County is transportation and dealing with the unhoused. Um, so I did, but, um, and unfortunately for us, Supervisor Rao, her big presentation was on the mountain area, not on the, the desert area. But that's okay. She knew we were there. And then, um, on Assemblyman Garcia's visit, I did take note that I, I do feel he will push for daycare, especially with the college. That is definitely a given in his program that day. And then he spoke at length, and then I did too, on the grant for El Garsas. He is in, you know, um, into historical type grants. So, and a couple of months ago, Rainy and I did walk El Garsas to figure out what we need just to get us, you know, started on that. I attended the city, the county superintendent's, um, luncheon with Ted Alejandro. He spoke very highly of Needles Schools, and their big, um, target right now is after graduation prep. They wanna be able to prep our students for after graduation. I think that trend is going back now. We grew up with it in high school, but now they've, are going back to that. So I attended the Fort Mojave Tribal Days. I was, it was a pleasure. Um, I invited Mayor, um, Steve DiAmico, um, Amico, um, to ride with me. We passed out ten bags of candy in a, in a block. And, um, we got to spend time speaking with, um, Chairman Williams, so that was a really good event. And, um, Patrick and, we're gonna, um, meet for lunch shortly. I did attend the St. Vincent de Paul Dinner, and it was, you know, they really are, um, considerate about feeding the less fortunate and working on the building to better serve, you know, Needles here. Um, I do wanna say Needles Homecoming this week. Um, Thursday is the snake dance bonfire, Friday is the game, the parade coronation, and Saturday's the dance. That's it. Thank you.
Veterans Day. What? Do I mention the Veterans Day?
Yeah.
And then we also, um, this is your last week. If you know veterans out there, to come to the hardware or the museum to sign up. We are definitely, um, on board with that, um, the Fort Mojave Tribe, the City of Needles and Needles Turn. So it'll be a really nice, um, day to honor our veterans. Free pancake breakfast, five dollars for everybody else, and we'll have guest speakers that are coming to speak to honor our veterans.
Hope you make it.
Meeting is adjourned.